The council is seeking volunteers who live in Ward Six to fill the seat. The council will be appointing someone to fill the remainder of the term from now until November. And we are seeking people who are not interested in continuing on in the seat beyond the election because we don't want to give preferential treatment during the election to any one individual. So really asking someone to step forward who would like to participate as a council member for the remainder of this term. Thank you.
And why don't you also say something about the foster parent gala?
Thank you. Mayor Williams and I went to the Council of Governments' annual Foster Parent Awards Dinner this week. It is always a very emotional time to see the great dedication that some people have to the young, less fortunate members of our communities. The, I think, most notable parents that were recognized at the event this year have been serving as foster parents for over forty-four years and have actually taken care of as foster children over three hundred kids during that forty-four years. And they're still at it and fostering kids and will probably do so as long as they live. It's a great opportunity. And Mayor Williams, I know that you've agreed to put on the agenda discussion of foster parenting here at one of our future council meetings.
Yes.
And I appreciate that.
Are there other council comments? Councilmember Wright?
First, I want to say I went with my son to the newly renovated Jackson Boyd Playground, and I was incredibly impressed. I think the city staff did a great job having that renovated. In particular, they chose this amazing piece of play equipment, which is a three-dimensional spider web that's about ten feet high, which if you have any, if you have kids that are of climbing age, I think they would be fascinated by it and love it. So I'd encourage people to go and use the newly renovated playground. The second thing I wanted to just comment on is the Mosaic project seems to be coming along amazingly. And the number of people I've seen working on that project every weekend, you know, is amazing because it's not only public art, but it's community art. And I think it's just fabulous. And this Friday, I think there's a, can't remember if it's at five or six.
Seven.
Seven. At seven. Here out at the Mosaic, there'll be a grand opening or grand unveiling, I guess, although it's unveiled already, with dancing and music and I think some food as well. And then lastly, just wanted to say that I hope we can put an agenda item on the agenda soon to have a work session around the boundary study. I think there was support by the council wanting to not necessarily choose an option, but potentially lay out some principles that they'd like the superintendent to consider as he looks at all the information and comes to a recommendation. And it sounds like from past times, the superintendent has taken options that exist and chosen from those options. And in other times, he's created his own options to submit to the Board of Eds. So I hope that we can try and put that on the schedule pretty soon. I think we do have some time, but I think it would be good to try and do it before we go away for MML, if not then, at least before we go away for the August recess. So, thank you.
We will do that. Are there other comments? Next item for the record, I just wanted to note that I've issued a mayor proclamation appointing a new mayor pro tem since Councilmember Barry is no longer serving. And I've appointed Councilmember Snipper as mayor pro tem. And so there will be a shift on the dais as people move this way. And you're both free to move this evening. You're free to wait till next week. Whatever you'd like to do, you can even try out different chairs, move halfway. And the next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes from March 16th and March 23rd when anybody would like to move their adoption.
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the minutes pass unanimously. Just one or two quick notes on scheduling update. Just wanted to remind folks that in two weeks, June 15th, we will be interviewing applicants to fill the unexpired term of the Ward Six council member. And we are tentatively going to discuss the Tacoma-Lane Crossroads preliminary Prince George's County Sector Plan. And on the following Monday, June 22nd, there will be a reception to honor Councilmember Barry and further interviews for his successor. And that's all I have in the way of reminders for upcoming agenda items. We're now to the public comment period. If anybody would like to comment on anything, not on our special session this evening. So anything that's on the work session or anything that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi again. I'm Charles Thomas, and I live in Tacoma Park. I'm one of the North Tacoma Ten in danger of being displaced through this school boundary study. And I was very encouraged to hear just now your talk about moving it forward because I was a little nervous looking at the rolling agenda and not seeing it there. My neighbors have been very encouraged by what they heard as you responded last week and I guess the same indication now. They're telling me, Chuck, don't worry, the city council's on our side. But in my twenty years' experience as a community activist and political advocate, I know that you can't really say that you've got someone's support of an elected body until they've taken the vote. So I just want to thank you for agreeing to take it up before, at least before the superintendent's decision on October 5th because that's when it's going to be most useful before that. But in addition to that, I also wanted to ask if it's at all possible to do it before June 10th? Because June 10th is the deadline of the official process. And I'm organizing with some folks now to stop the process. This is separate from what the other folks in my neighborhood are now building momentum towards influencing the superintendent, including hopefully through your resolution. But specifically, stop the process, and I set up a Yahoo group called Stop the Process, is because there are many fatal flaws in the process, including some which resulted in the folks living in Tacoma Park east of New Hampshire Avenue not having a representative at the table of the advisory panel comprised of PTA members throughout the area. And just like my neighborhood wasn't represented, when I noticed that that neighborhood wasn't represented, it really struck me as especially unjust. And I've started reaching out to some of the organizing groups in that community. I'm looking for any other ideas people could reach me through Stop the Process Yahoo group or call me, 301-873-8806. This is a really unfortunate time with Councilmember Barry stepping down, that, you know, half of Ward Six, you know, the most economically disadvantaged section, doesn't have a seat at the table. And the folks west of New Hampshire of Ward Six did a tremendous job trying to get input from the community. But unfortunately, they weren't from the community, and they didn't get much input from the community. And they're not forthcoming about what little input they did get, though one of them said that people did buy in that area, investing in Sligo Creek. So we don't know, and we can't talk about them until we're talking with them. And until we know what they want, until we have someone from east of New Hampshire at the same table with someone, probably Barbara or Lynn, not me, don't worry, from, you know, from my neighborhood, for everyone to really try and come up with a win-win solution. And I have until June 10th, and my lawyer thinks it's possible. So if you could pass a resolution, whether or not your resolution overtly calls for stopping the process, even if it just backs the principle of not evicting the North Tacoma Ten, that would be helpful in my last day before June 10th, you know, to try and stop the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move along to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Then we are ready to move to the next item, which is the presentation this evening from the folks who are here from the Tacoma Theater Conservancy. And if you all would like to say anything first before your, before your presentation on the screen, once you're ready for that, then we can move from here down into the audience. So. You ready to go?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Very pleased to be here. I'm Loretta Newman. I'm president of the Tacoma Theater Conservancy and very much appreciate being here, having an opportunity to tell you about what we've been doing to try to save the Tacoma Theater. And if there's one thing I want you to leave with tonight, it's this thought, and that is that theater may, the address of the theater may be in DC, but it's all of ours. It's Tacoma Park, Maryland's theater, as well as Tacoma, DC. That Tacoma sign that's on the top means it's for everyone, and we feel very strongly that it is, and that will serve the people of Tacoma Park, Maryland, as well as the people in Tacoma and North DC, all of DC, entire area. With that, we do have a presentation. I first want to introduce a couple of people that are with me, and will be putting on part of the presentation with me as well. Carol Livia Haran. Carol Livia is our vice president. She's also head of our programming committee and has already been working on some wonderful programs and plans for future ones. And Steve Smith. Steve is our treasurer, but he's also head of our Acquisition and Development Committee and has been doing a lot of work on various studies of the theater, both how it is now and what the potential uses can be architecturally. And we have with us, and he's putting up his presentation boards as we speak, is Tom Johnson from the architectural firm of Martinez &amp; Johnson. And they are doing wonderful work for us in terms of architectural design and looking at the engineering needs and that sort of thing. So with that, I would like to have the screen, and we have a PowerPoint presentation, and you can come down.
Welcome to all of you, and we'll move down there and proceed to the presentation.
Thank you. You can check out our boards there as you come. You'll see, we had a tour of the theater in February, and the pictures there on the top board were taken then. And inside, it was the first time, several of us have been inside the theater in a couple of years. The owner was very gracious, met with us, let about a dozen people, our architects, our engineers and people, go through it. And later, you'll see some more pictures from it as part of our PowerPoint presentation. But it was quite an eye-opening experience. And what we'd like to do is give you the presentation, and then we hope that you'll have questions, a discussion with us when we're finished. Well, while they're fixing that, I'll just start because there are things that I can point out, and then when we come to a slide, though, we can slide by it. We have a campaign that we've started to raise money for the theater, and we've been calling it our Opening the Doors Campaign. What we call our presentation is, let's open the doors and help save, there we go, great. Save and revive the historic Tacoma Theater as a cultural arts and education center for our Tacoma communities. And again, we put that plural, and that's our thought today. If we can move on, this is our program, just a quick outline. Move on. These are our goals. And they're not just the conservancy's goals, they really should be everybody's goals for this theater. To save it, we need to purchase it, renovate and develop it, establish a vibrant, professionally-managed, community-based cultural and arts and education center, and then create a catalyst for revitalizing the entire commercial area. And by that, we do mean both Tacoma Park, Maryland and DC around the Tacoma Metro Station. It's one of the few historic theaters left in all of Washington and around in Maryland as well. It was built in 1923 by Tacoma Theater Corporation, headed by Wilmer G. Platt, the former Tacoma Park, Maryland mayor. It was designed by noted theater architect John Zink. And as many people may recall, the Tacoma Park Folk Festival was launched in 1978 to save the theater. I was one of the people, along with Sarah Green and Rich Holsager, who were running a project to show movies at the theater for about a year and a half in 1978, '79. And we were doing a good job, but we needed money, and we were scared that we would have to close. And so Sam Abbott said, well, hey, we can do something, we can put on a show. And so he came up with the idea of the Folk Festival, and we all did it and raised, I think it was about $1,000 at the time, that was just a lot of money, and it really helped us keep going for a while. But later, it was purchased and renovated by the current owner. He enlarged the stage for live performances, but that didn't work. And most recently, in 2002, he decided he wanted to tear it down. He put in an application. It's in our historic district, so he had to apply through the Historic Preservation Review Board, and they declined to allow him to do that. And to this day, it's still in that state. He still wants to tear it down, he still can't tear it down, but that's his dream. We have a different dream. The theater is central and accessible to both Maryland and DC, and I'm not going to read every slide. So I just want you to see from this how accessible it is to Tacoma Old Town and all the way to Tacoma Junction. It's part of that whole corridor. It anchors our side of the commercial area, that little strip coming up Fourth Street. It's easy walking distance to Maryland as well as DC. And even our facade improvement program we're doing is in conjunction with the Old Tacoma Business Association. Now, this is what the theater inside looked like in 2004, and it's in not as good condition today. It is deteriorating. But as you can see, it is functionally and architecturally intact, and our architect who specializes in renovating historic theaters says, we can do it, it's doable. We started out trying to raise support, and it was overwhelming. And you can see from those dots where a lot of that support has come from Tacoma Park, Maryland. Now, of course, we were at the Tacoma Park Folk Festival and at the Street Festival getting signatures, but nevertheless, people came to us. We didn't have to get out and hustle. They really support saving the theater. We've raised a lot of money, at least to us, it seems like a lot of money, from government, from foundations, including the Tacoma Foundation and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And our DC government has been very generous in funding the studies that we need in order to save the theater. And lots of individuals, too, nearly $40,000. And these range from $10 to $5,000. So not huge amounts, but a lot of them. And we have a lot of outstanding professionals who are working with us. Our Board of Directors is multidisciplinary. In fact, the two people accompanying me, both have PhDs in their fields and are extremely professional. And we have two board members who are from Maryland, so we are from both areas. And then you can see from that list, we have all kinds of important professional assistants. And what we had done, one of our first studies, was a needs assessment. And we had this, again, funded from the DC government. A firm out of New York, the web management consulting firm who does these sorts of things all over the United States, they studied it, and they had three questions. Is there a market? Is there an audience? Is the space needed by performers and other users? And can it compete with other facilities? And they said, yes. Yes, it can. That's okay. That's what she was thinking. First of all, the market is very positive here. Educational attainment, they said, is the most important indicator of arts attendance. And then also, age and income are good factors, and we have all of that in the Tacoma area in both DC and Maryland. And we have also, we are home, as I know everybody knows, we have lots of arts programs here. The Washington National Opera, Liz Lerman Dance, Contradiction Dance Institute, and on and on. The Folk Festival, the Jazz Festival, the DC Youth Orchestra, and many, 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 many more. And I was on a committee that was studying arts zoning in the district, and they recommended Tacoma as a possible new arts district. So that would be a great addition. Several years ago, what, in 2006, the Washington National Opera, and I am an opera buff, so I attended this, had a performance of Mozart's Cozy Fantutti, and it was exquisite. But they had to hold it in their, that Seventh-day Adventist building that they now have their rehearsal halls in. And it was excellent, but it was difficult for them to put on. But as you can see from that circle, they drew people from all the way almost to Baltimore. Think of all the people that could come to our area and come to the stores and shops in Maryland as well as DC, as well, of course, serving our community residents with theater as well. But think of all the people outside money that can be brought to our neighborhoods just from having the theater. But we need, there are lots of things in the theater because performers have their needs. They want the auditorium, they like the size, but they also need flexible spaces, rehearsal space, classrooms. And then specific things, like dancers need good flooring, musicians want good sound equipment, film requires special audiovisual equipment and that sort of thing, we'll need to get. The theater needs further capabilities, and you can see wing space and dressing rooms and performer support spaces and orchestra space if we're going to have musical functions, and the Washington National Opera would need that. And again, just summarizing, the needs assessment said, though, that our competitive advantage is our location and our size. There are very few theaters that are larger than the 516-seat theater, Tacoma Theater. And most of the new theaters are much smaller, so there is a niche here for us. There are also the possibilities of helping schools. Most of the schools today don't have the kinds of performing arts functions and activities that certainly I had when I was growing up. And we've been talking to schools, we've been talking to teachers and parents and principals, and they are very excited about the possibilities of doing cooperative programs with the theater. So yes, the study concluded it would work, it could be restored. They gave two options, we blended them and said it could be restored, both as a community arts and education center and home for several producing groups. So where are we now with getting our cultural arts and education center? I think from this point, I'm going to let Steve take over, since this is part of this, this is his expertise. He's going to then have Carol Livia talk about programming. He's then going to talk to you with Tom Johnson about the possible plans for the renovations, and then I'll return with a brief summary.
Well, obviously, it begins with the building. And we were fortunate enough to graciously had a walk-through with the owner back in February, and this is sort of what we found, that it's structurally sound, but there's lots of deterioration, there's water in the basement, the roof leaks, and lots needs to be done. But in contrast to many theaters, and you may know that a lot of work is being done at Howard Theater downtown on U Street, it really is still a theater. It is not a CVS, it is not a food store, and it is still capable of having performances done there. Except, it was always a movie theater, not a performing arts theater, which means, as you'll see in some later slides, that the stage is shallow, it doesn't have a lot of performer support spaces. So we need to think about that. We've had the benefit of Tom Johnson's expertise as architect and Forester Construction to help us look at the engineering. Forester, you may know, was responsible for all of the renovation in the Ford's Theater, which was recently completed. Go back once. The cost, our first estimate, as you'll see, is a bounded cost for purchase and renovation. Instead of trying to kind of come up with one number, we've always been careful to come up with bounds, what we think is a reasonable lower bound and upper bound, and base all of our decisions on those bounds instead of having a number which people say, do you really think that's the number? Next slide, please. We are in the process now of conducting four studies under DC grant funds. The first is what we call user requirements, and Martinez &amp; Johnson is helping with this. The idea is, what kinds of spaces do performers need? What are the critical elements? Do we need this to attract certain kinds of performers? What is the return on making that kind of capital investment? If it's a very expensive item and it would only cut out two performances a year, well, maybe we'd make a different decision. So that's, we're trying to make the theater sustainable as well as flexible. The second is design alternatives, and I'll show you some in a few minutes. The third is about parking and traffic. And as we know, on OTBA, parking and traffic are big issues. And so we are trying to begin a study on the available parking at kind of theater-based hours and see what we can do in that realm. But of course, the theater has the advantage of being near a metro compared to other theaters around the city, notably the Atlas down on Eighth Street, no parking, no metro. So we feel we're in pretty good shape to begin with, but we still need to answer those questions about parking. And the last is a structural and engineering requirements, and again, we're being assisted there by Forester and other firms. Next slide. What we have done is looked at a lot of other theaters, comparable theaters in the area, and looked at their tax returns, their 990s, which are all public, and tried to figure out what kind of revenues could one expect for a 500-seat theater. And we've kind of, what I would call, triangulated in on numbers to make those estimates. And we find that roughly theaters can expect $1,000 to $2,000 per seat if they keep the theater occupied. But all nonprofits in the country only have 40% to 60% of the revenues coming from box office. All of the rest, in 90% of the theaters around the country, come from contributions and grants. So we don't expect box office to cover all expenses, but given that, we expect our budget to be between $900,000 and $2.25 million. Next slide, please. With that, I'm going to hand the mic over to Carol Livia and talk about our plans for the program.
Thank you. Carol Livia Haran. And as you said, I do, I've been working with the programming. We are hoping to move toward three basic areas. The arts and education area, in which we'd have part of the innovations of the building. We would have classrooms, dance studios, people writing plays and that sort of thing. And you would be interconnected with the school system, both in Washington DC and in Maryland. We want to get some major tenants who would essentially rent the building on a continuing basis. And then we'd bring in special programs, and those would be the other users for the video, film, and performing arts. And we really have a huge list of organizations that would want to do some work there. Some things we've already done, we've actually begun our programming, we decided we wanted to get our name out and tell everyone that we're doing something right now, even though we don't have the use of the building. And one thing we've done with a grant from the Humanities Council of Washington DC is to do a memories of Tacoma Theater. And I'm sure all of you know Dorothy Barnes, the historian of Tacoma. We think of her that way, too. And she was telling me many stories about the Tacoma Theater. I'm laughing, I'm thinking about, she had a crush on one of the ushers there. That was really the funniest story, I think, she told us. And she said, she said, he was a real cad. He had all the girls in the neighborhood falling in love with him. But the other interesting story she told us was how she got on the dinky line of an old trolley in front of the theater and took the trolley over to Sligo Creek, I believe, in that area. And she told me many, many other stories. All of that has been recorded, it's on DVDs, and they're actually in the archives in Washington DC for the Humanities Council. Also, I am the librettist for the Washington National Opera production of Let Freedom Sing, the story of Marion Anderson. And the Tacoma Theater Conservancy sponsored a reading of the libretto in Tacoma, DC, at Trinity Episcopal. And you see there, four of us playing the four parts. I got to play Marion Anderson. That was really fun, since I can't sing at all. But it was delightful. And it's also giving our name, getting our name out to the neighborhood and to the community. But we are, as we go into the next slide, thank you. Oh, yes, your band, your community band was there, too, from Maryland. They have been, for three years, the Tacoma Park, Maryland Community Band has been providing a concert for the Tacoma, Washington, DC. We call it the Beyond Black History Month Concert, mainly because we can never seem to get it scheduled in February, so it's been in March every year. We call it Beyond Black History Month Concert. We call it Beyond Black History Month Concert, and you see them there. This is another one of the projects sponsored by the, by the Conservancy. But anyway, we are continuing, we are, in addition to these programs that are already going on, we, I am developing several new programs that we actually hope to start this year. I'm hoping that we can go into the schools in September of this year with several city, city story slams, if you will. You've heard about the poetry slams, where people do poetry back and forth, and we want stories about the cities coming out of the elementary schools, where, where you can tell a story about your community and how your community does its, what, does the thing it does well and goes on for, to the fur, to further places, interconnecting our communities with each other. We have several organizations, we have Smithsonian's, we have Discovery Theater, we have lots of other places that all want to do the programs. Even though we can't use the theater starting in September, we do have at least a little bit of funding so that we can put some of these programs right in the schools right now. And, and co-sponsoring with us, also, the Washington National Opera wants to put my, my opera in the schools, and then I would develop educational products as, going along with this, teaching science, math, all kinds of things, but also going into the dramatic and the dance related to the Washington National Opera, so that the Conservancy would actually have a partnership with the opera as we go forward. Then our list of artists and performing groups that we, we hope to put on, put on programs and events throughout the year, even if we don't have the space right now, to give our name some use in the local artist community.
Part of what we need to explore as we go forward with our business plan is to understand what it's going to take financially, what's going to be required, and I talked a minute ago about requirements for performers. So we've done a lot of work thinking about alternatives, concepts that might someday be there to support the Cultural Arts Center. This is, just by way of background, this is the context, the theater operates at the corner of Butternut and Fourth. It owns the, current owner owns the parking lot next to it, and to the right of that is the Tacoma Village Cooperative. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view, courtesy of Google, of course, and you see that there's very little room behind the theater at the current moment that the theater has control over. It does have control over that parking lot. So we've come up with some alternative visions that involve looking at both of those spaces. Again, this is sort of smoke out of the ears as we go through it. This is what it looks like on the interior. The stage, as you can see, is rather shallow, shallow, those little curved things there with the original front of the stage, it's called a proscenium, and then it's extended forward by the current owner, taking out about 200 seats, and it has a fairly good lobby space and retail space on the corner, and then there's office space on the second floor. Next slide. So here are two options. The first is utilizing the side parking lot for additional space. We are working with the Tacoma Village folks to think about these kinds of things, to make it beneficial to both the theater and, and their community. We want it to be a win-win and not to infringe upon their spaces in an obnoxious way, which I should say. So we're also looking at space behind the theater, which would be most advantageous given it was a movie theater and we want it turned into a performing arts theater. Next slide, please. This is how it might look in cross-section if we use the rear of the space. You can see that we could put roughly a three-story building behind there that would have classroom space and rehearsal space and office space that would serve both the theater and the And I'll hand it back to Loretta for the summary.
I'll just hold it. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Carol Livia. Oh, if you could put this on the table. So, just to summarize our, our goals, to save the theater, to establish a cultural, community-based cultural arts and education center, and to revitalize the entire commercial area in both DC and Maryland. And I, I stress those three points because we can't, any one of those alone isn't sufficient. We need them all. And with everybody's help, you can see a wonderful vision now. This was a lovely drawing that a local architect did that at least shows that, you know, some fun excitement that can be there. And just down that street, you know, is the Metro Station. We're one and a half blocks from Metro, we're like two and a half blocks from the DC-Maryland line. This is just an incredible location, an incredible building, an incredible space that can be useful for all of us. So I encourage everybody, encourage you and the people who are listening, to go to our website, there's a lot of wonderful information there, and in fact, Steve did that, too. He's also, he's multitasking all the time. He is our webmaster, and he's done a great job. We also are on Facebook, so if you're on Facebook, you can just search for Tacoma Theater and spelled with an RE, and you'll find us. Before I end, and I do want to thank you, thank you, thank you for having us here, we'd like to suggest some ways that you could help us. First of all, Steve is also, as treasurer, working on our business plan, and as part of that, it's been suggested by several people, the bankers and others, that showing support from a wide variety of sources is, is very important. And so that's one of the reasons we're meeting, Seth Grimes, for example, has been helping set up meetings with various performing groups and individuals who are interested in using the theater, and out of that, we need to get letters of support from them that can then go into our business plan. If they want to use the theater, how often might they use the theater? And we, we can use that to, to generate our plans for the future. But we also need to show political support, that there, that there, our city government has already shown it in spades. The mayor supports it, our city councilperson, Muriel Bowser, a council member from Ward Four in DC, has been extremely supportive, and it would help us a lot to have the Tacoma Park, Maryland City Council show its support as well. So I don't know what format you do that, if you do a resolution or a letter or what, but something that could be put in our business plan would be extremely important to us. And then also, since we know that you put this on cable and on the internet, and I know that there are a lot of other people who are listening and watching this presentation we're making, we'd like to strongly urge them to help us as well. And not help us, we would like you to join us. We, we need volunteers. We do need money. We are raising money. We're raising money to make a down payment. We are ultimately going to be raising private sector as well as public sector money for the acquisition and development of the theater. We have raised about, right now, we're close to what, Steve? $50,000 are we at? We're 52 for our down payment. We're inching up towards, our goal is $100,000, so we're over halfway there. We also need funds to, to do some of these programs that we're going to get Carol Livia talked about. We can get the word out about Tacoma and the wonderful arts that are here, and, and we can help be a catalyst for that. So we would strongly urge both the city council to help us in any way you see fit, and also the people who live in Tacoma Park, Maryland, and Montgomery County as well, we need your help, too. So thank you again, we appreciate being here, and we'll answer any questions, and we have our architect, if you would like to ask him questions as well. Oh, and the, as you're looking at the pictures there, the young man on that bottom, I see you're looking left-hand display, in the middle at the top, that's the young man that Dorothy Barnes had a crush on. He's standing in front of, he was an usher at the theater, and he looks really cute, I'd have a crush on him, too. How is that young?
Thanks very much for the presentation and for all that helpful information. I was struck that you're facing some of the same issues that we faced in thinking about this particular space, and as you talked about, a small stage, you have a small stage that's going to be bigger, and many of the same issues, and, you know, who's going to use it, and how do you, how do you provide, you know, proper flooring for, or proper facilities of whatever type for a multipurpose use space? So I think we have a pretty good understanding of the, of the types of issues that you're dealing with and how, how to go through a whole process and think about it, certainly on a different scale than what we were facing here. But I was also struck by thinking about the, I don't know what the word is, but the, the shared sense of what you're trying to do and what we were trying to do in expanding the use for this room, and, and thinking about the, your, your potential space is a very different size than the space in here. I think there's about 160 or 170 seats in here, and I know that that can draw different uses, and I, and I thought about it in the same way that I always tell people, if it's like, if they own a restaurant and another restaurant is thinking of coming, it's like, that's better. It's better to have more of them, more choices, you draw more people. It's, it's easier for attracting audiences and performers when there's that, that certain, I'm not coming up with the word on that either, but the, you know, you gotta, it's certain.
Synergy.
Synergy, there we go.
I totally agree, and I think some people have said, well, gee, with all of the new things opening up and Montgomery College and all of that, you know, it's not competition. And I say, we're not going to compete, we're going to collaborate. We want people to think of arts when they think of this entire area, and it's, so they're not going to come for just one kind of art, one kind of music, one kind of drama, you know, they, they come for a variety of reasons, and we'll have lots of things to support them.
And I think it's very interesting when you pointed out that the first Tacoma Park Festival was to help get theater back up and running. And I think that we would be happy to give you something that would show our support. I imagine we could come up with a resolution or something that we could, we could provide so that it would be helpful to you, and as you said, provide a lot of publicity and make sure that folks know and understand that this is not just a Tacoma DC facility and opportunity, but that it crosses boundaries and that there are a lot of people who can get involved and contribute in whatever way they might contribute and help bring this to fruition. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? That's where we're at.
I have a question. Do you know if the theater area is eligible for New Markets Tax Credits? Is that something you all have looked into? New Markets, are you familiar with New Market Tax Credits?
I am, to a degree, and I had been told that we didn't, and then somebody recently said we might want to research it again because it might be that now we would. So, as of several years ago, we were told, a couple of years ago, I was told, no, but, but I've not been told that officially, so I'm certainly happy to explore it.
Yeah, I would look into it again because I think also as part of the stimulus.
Steve, have you looked at that, Steve?
We haven't looked at the full range of tax credits yet.
New Markets are very interesting tax credits, and there, there's a whole chunk of New Markets Tax Credits that have come online as part of the new stimulus package, so it's a great source of funding. I'm part of, on the board of a charter school that used it to, you know, basically build a whole, construct a whole building with New Markets Tax Credits.
There are also historic preservation tax credits that we might be able to benefit from, federal ones.
Great. The second question was, was, has there been any thought or investigation into whether you could preserve the, the structure of the theater but also build on top of it? I noticed in the, the picture, looking up Fourth Street, there's, many buildings have additional stories on top of them that don't exist there now, and, you know, that does, I guess, by a strict historic preservationist, create some issue, but also it might allow you to preserve all aspects of the theater inside and out, but add something on top of it, and it also helps with the density in the area, which is usually helpful with surrounding local businesses.
We have talked to the Historic Preservation Office about that and to what might be allowed. We just want to be extremely careful that we are good neighbors to Tacoma Village Cohousing, which is next door, and they're not building, you know, we could build up to the lot line, but what would that do to the backyards of the people who live there? So we simply would not do that. And going up and out, we've thought about that, too, and, and maybe there might be some economics that would help, but on the other hand, we, that is an historic building freestanding, and that we could, I've been told by the city people, if we needed to use some of the very back part of it, that's where we could go up, like if we had fly spaces, or like building ups just in the back, about the back third of it, that we could probably do that if it was designed appropriately, they have all kinds of design controls. But as far as the rest of it, the auditorium, no, and, and I wouldn't want to. I really, it is, that's part of the history of the building.
Great, thanks, that's my question.
Thank you for the presentation, it's very interesting. I would love to have a Performing Arts and Cultural Center nearby like that. My wife and I have longtime subscribers to Studio Theater, which, as you know, also has the same kind of, excuse the ill-occurring, it made me wonder if thought of partner the theaters in, in the Washington area, surprisingly, Washington has a fair amount, they're actually not well-known, best kept secret of Washington.
We're second to New York.
Yeah.
In the United States.
So I wondered if you'd thought of partnering with them, because they, like, like Studio Theater, with which I'm pretty familiar, they've been, they have a whole successful remodeling of their facilities there.
Studio is a wonderful, I love Studio, I go there, too, and it's a wonderful example of very high-quality theater in DC, and a smaller theater than ours. Theirs is only about, they're less than 300 seats. So if they, for example, wanted to do something in a larger space but not in a huge space, Lincoln Theater, for example, has 1,200 seats. Most of the bigger ones, like Warner and the ones downtown, are like 3,000 seats. So you're, you know, we're, we have a niche size that's not too small and not too big. And so, yes, we are wanting to reach out to, to other theaters like Studio and say, you know, there may be ways that we, again, collaborate, not compete, and, and especially, I think, on the Metro Line as well, theaters that we could have joint things that we offered. And also the Avalon, Crossing Military Road, they do just film. Well, we're not going to do first-run film, we might do some independent documentary film, we might do something with Silverdocks and with AFI, those kinds of partnerships. The Jewish Film Festival is interested in us, and I'm sure that Tacoma Park Film Festival would be interested. I know Joy Austin Lane, back when she was working on that, was interested. So we would love to collaborate with a lot of different groups. So, yes, I love Studio.
Thanks for that great presentation. I, I think it'd be a great asset, I know it'd be a great asset, and I've got this kind of image of a Chautauqua or a place to come where you can see lots of things on any given night or weekend, and it would be a centerpiece, clearly be a centerpiece for that kind of draw to our area. I have a couple little questions. I, I know that there are funds available, depending on what, what you're doing, that have to do with energy efficiency and, and that sort of thing, that's, it would be great since you're starting from, not really from scratch, but from a fairly low point, if you could make that theater really a show, a showpiece in that regard, too, and you might draw money, too, at the project, and you'd certainly draw interest. And my other, my little question is, what's the, what's the story in the back lot there? Who, who does own it now, and what, what have you been thinking?
The back lot is owned by the Tacoma Village Cohousing.
I see.
And so we have talked to them about the possibility of swapping some of our side lot with their back lot. If we could build to the back of the theater, it would be extremely helpful to the use of that stage and to loading and to, you know, right now, there's no wing space, we need to go out a little bit to the side, no matter what we do, but going to the back would make it much easier to use.
Does the entire side, between the theater and Cohousing, does, does any of that belong to the theater, or does that all belong to Cohousing? I'm a little unclear.
The side of, the parking lots... The side of, the parking lots on the side of the theater towards the Tacoma Village Cohousing is owned by the theater.
Okay.
The back, that parking area in the back.
So their back section is an L?
Yeah.
You know, since it goes all, it goes back. And do they use that currently for parking?
Yes.
Okay, how many spaces are there roughly?
Steve, I don't know.
I think it's 15 or 20.
15, 20. We would, we would, you know, make sure that they were whole when it was over.
Sure.
And they may actually get some things. We've thought about ways that they could benefit from doing a joint thing there, so maybe they can have some additional, maybe not parking, but they also need some other spaces for other uses than parking. And maybe we could do something jointly with them. So we're looking at that, and I don't know if Tom or Steve want to say anything about that.
Well, one of the-
You need the microphone. Steve, Steve, you have to come to the microphone.
You have, you must.
Yes.
One of the key issues for the Tacoma Village has always been an awkward entrance from Butternut right near Blair Road. And so they are particularly interested in using Fourth Street, where the theater parking lot is, as an entrance. And that would solve some of their problems. And at the same time, we would be able to use the back of the theater for the construction of other spaces. So there's mutual benefit here, and we're still talking and there are no agreements, but we're all very hopeful that we can work something out in collaboration, so it's a win for everybody.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Stevens.
Thank you. I have no questions and I have no suggestions. I would just like to voice my support for this exciting boost to the revitalization of that strip that goes from the theater, as you said, all the way up to our old town. And I think it would be fantastic.
Tacoma Village and you.
Yeah, why not?
And I think we'd be happy to help spread the word any way we can and make sure that people know that if they want to see the presentation, that they can access it on our website anytime. And we will get you a resolution of support to help you and, as I said, spread the word.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you all. We'll move to our special session items. The first one is the Second Reading Ordinance Adapting a Revised FY09 ASME Pay Plan. Would somebody like to introduce its second reading?
Second.
I didn't hear who, I didn't hear who-
Oh, I'll move it.
Is there any discussion on this item? We had first reading, I don't know, a week or two ago. And this will revise the pay plans for ASME, just as we previously did for the police and the non-ASME police.
Those employees who are not represented by a bar gang unit, please.
Okay, there's no council comment this evening? Is there any public comment on this Second Reading Ordinance? Seeing none, will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
And that passes four to one. And if I can just also take this opportunity to point out that now that we are temporarily a council of six, a majority of the council is still four. So that item passes, and we'll move to the next item, which is a resolution opposing Historic Preservation Amendment 09-1 at the county council. We sent a letter opposing this to get that in under the deadline, but we also wanted to pass a formal resolution. Would somebody like to move this resolution?
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Snapper. Are there any council comments? Councilwoman Robinson.
I'd just like to have the opportunity to discuss the historic preservation in general at a future date, not this time. I think it's worth a good discussion.
Are there any comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing a number of people in the audience who I think are probably here for this item.
Thank you. I'm Sabrina Behren, the President of Historic Tacoma, and I'd like to thank the council for writing the letter in opposition to this amendment and for passing this very strong resolution opposing this amendment. Tacoma Park, Maryland has the largest historic district in Montgomery County, Maryland, which makes it one of the largest districts in the state of Maryland. It's a very important asset to this community. It's very important to our understanding of who we are, where we've been, where we're going. The NAP Amendment could not be more ill-conceived, and if it's enacted the way it's currently proposed, it would serve to eviscerate the Historic Preservation Program in Montgomery County, which is a nationally recognized program that has been very successful over the course of the past 30 years. Like I say, it's very ill-conceived, the preservation community not consulted on this amendment as it went forward at all. And the objections of a few, of a few bad apples, in this case, being elevated to injure the benefit that historic preservation in Montgomery County and in this community has for the larger community and for our larger heritage. So, again, I'd like to thank you very much for taking this stand. It's very important for Tacoma Park to speak up on this issue, as I say, because we do have the largest historic district in Montgomery County. And thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Ms. Behren, could you describe what you mean by the few bad apples? Can you just sketch that out first?
The way that the Historic Preservation Ordinance has worked in Montgomery County is that the vast majority of cases that go forward for historic area work permit for alteration, renovation, addition, et cetera, I would venture to say that something on the order of 95, 97% of those cases are, those applications are approved. There's a notion in, in the larger population that historic preservation is restrictive, you know, that we can, we can tell you what color to paint your house or what to plant in your front yard or things like that. Or that people are held to using esoteric and very expensive materials, which is not at all true. The Historic Preservation Commission bends over backward to try to work with homeowners to serve preservation interests as well as to serve quality of life issues for homeowners. So it's a very small percentage of cases that are not allowed to proceed as originally proposed. And there've been a couple of very high-profile cases in the past couple of years that have contributed to this perception that historic preservation is onerous and burdensome and restrictive. One thing that I've heard from the county council, for example, is that it's onerous to require homeowners, property owners, to have architectural plans when they go in for a historic area work permit. But if you're going to go further in the building permit process, you have to have those plans anyway. So I don't understand, you know, why it's onerous to have to have those for, you know, for the hot process that's at the very beginning. So that's what I mean when I say that, that there's this very, very small number of cases that have been, small number of applications that have been turned down, whereas the, you know, the vast majority of them are approved and go forward.
So bad apple means that they're bad applications? Is that what you mean?
No, I think, I think, I think they're wrongly inclined applications. I mean, you know, for example, somebody who wanted to, you know, subdivide a lot that had held a single, single-family home, you know, wanted to subdivide the lot and put, you know, six or eight larger homes on that lot. And it wasn't, it wasn't just the preservation community, it was their neighbors who were not happy about having that happen. But, you know, historic preservation is where the tomatoes were, is where the tomatoes were thrown because it was, you know, it was a convenient target. But, you know, there are lots of people who have an interest, there are lots of people who have concerns in these cases, and, you know, the needs and desires of property owners have to be balanced with the needs and desires of immediate neighbors in the larger community. And, you know, that's what those of us, the preservation community, work for, are to achieve those kinds of compromises and those kinds of balances.
Can you address the, really, our great need to address global warming and the historic preservation requirements and how historic preservation, the historic preservation community is adapting or embracing, I would hope it would be embracing, the need to dramatically increase the efficiency of our homes?
That's definitely the case. And, you know, the greenest building is the building that already exists, right? You know, because otherwise you have, you know, old-growth lumber, for example, ending up in landfills. You know, lots of people want to replace wooden windows with vinyl or metal windows on the grounds that they're more energy efficient, when it's proven that storm windows are very good at energy efficiency. And then if you replace those windows, again, you have old-growth materials that end up in a landfill that doesn't serve anyone's interest. The Association of Fire Chiefs of the United States tells us that most people who die in house fires die as a result of fumes that are emitted from vinyl materials in replacement windows.
I'm talking about energy efficiency. I'm trying to zero in on that.
Right. Well, windows are very much in the forefront of that, of that, of that issue. You know, insulation, solar energy panels, energy-efficient storm windows, energy-efficient HPA systems, all of these are perfectly compatible with preservation. And the preservation community, you know, your word has embraced those kinds of, those kinds of alterations and those kinds of moderations.
I'm glad to hear that.
If I might just add to that, there's also the credits that you can get for improving a historic building are very helpful for continued maintenance of historic properties.
You can get the energy, the improved energy efficiency credits in addition to tax credit programs at both the state and the federal level for-
For historic houses.
Do you mean that, do you mean that being in an historic district helps you leverage those funds?
That's right.
You're able to get them, you're able to get the historic preservation funds, and then you can also use energy funds and that kind of-
Regular, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Whereas those of us who are not in historic districts, you know, can't tap into those funds.
Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the resolution?
My name is Lorraine Purusall. I'm with Historic Tacoma, and I just want to say, hey, Dan, also, now there are even shingles being developed, roof shingles. I understand that are solar roof shingles. So the technology is coming along, which is really great, and all these, all these wonderful things are going on. I just want to really thank you. I'm very tired tonight. I'm not going to talk long, but I just want to really thank you for doing this. There's, you, there's a lot written about what the NAP Amendment is trying to do, raise the bar for designations and also take, make the planning board the final voice. And that flies in the face of other master plan ways of doing things. And so, and it's not the way it is done across the state. The Maryland Historical Trust, the National Trust, and Preservation Maryland. And so all the national state organizations have come out against this very ill-conceived action. So we appreciate very much that you've taken this very strong step. And I know there's a lot of developer interest in raising the bar, but, and taking away certain criteria. For example, a higher artistic value is one of the things that was proposed with this, and that's a national criterion. And so we disagree with that, and I'm sure there are development interests that would be very happy to see this happen. So we very much, very much appreciate your resolution. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to comment? Okay, thank you for all your comments. And I'd also like to thank the Deputy City Manager, who was very helpful in providing the draft of the letter and the resolution.
Thanks.
And helped us get those comments in in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments in addition. For those who aren't familiar with what's included in this resolution, the proposal, the Historic Preservation Amendment text did three major things. It had grammar improvements in the text of the ordinance, a requirement that owners of the historic resources be notified every five years that they are owners of a historic resource, so they can take advantage of the various opportunities for them. But then it did have, as was alluded to by the commenters, significant changes in process and in the way historic resources are designated, which do cause quite a lot of concern in both from legal, legal process questions as well as just the overall intent. We did receive back from Council President Phil Andrews, a letter thanking the council for making the, for submitting the letter. He notes that the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee, or the Fed Committee, has tentatively scheduled a work session on this amendment for next Monday, June 8th. I believe it's at 2:00 PM. The, he says that the committee will review the public hearing record and make recommendations as it deems appropriate. I expect the committee to address the legal issues raised by the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the criteria for historic designation. The council will then have the opportunity to dispose of HPA 091 in any manner. It may disapprove, approve, or approve the amendment with revisions. So what we would do is forward the resolution on in advance of the Fed Committee's hearing. And if somebody wants to attend that committee, I can pass on that information for the time and place.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any further question or comment from the council? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, the ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you all, and we will-
It's the Suzy Show, so whenever you want to say it, I'm sorry.
Why don't we take a short break and then come back for our work session items? Complete?
It's a sober time.
Oh.
Oh.
Are there going to be more of those, or are we going to-
We're in sobering times, you know? I can tell.
It's going to be a long night. We might as well go into it happily.
This is a discussion on the current liquor license law.
I hope this discussion, I hope this discussion doesn't stagger all over the place.
And we're being joined by the Deputy City Manager, the Police Chief, the City Attorney, and the Executive Director of UTBA.
Yes, we are going to kind of start a discussion about the liquor license laws in Tacoma Park and recognize that it's not likely to actually conclude with anything today, but it's an overview of information, a discussion of some of the issues, and some sense from you and some direction to you about some of the next steps that we'll be looking at over the next few months. As I've included in your packet, there's some background information on Tacoma Park liquor license laws, and where I missed that, maybe Sue can correct me. But we have in Tacoma Park really quite restrictive alcoholic beverage laws. And like all alcoholic beverage laws in the state of Maryland, they're codified in the Maryland Code. So even if it just applies to Tacoma Park, in order to make any change, you need to go through the state legislature for a state law change. We've had, the history in Tacoma Park is that, Tacoma Park is divided into Prince George's County and Montgomery County. On the Prince George's County side, the properties there were governed by the Prince George's County alcoholic beverage laws, which did allow for a variety of different kinds of liquor licenses, including even a full packaged liquor store, which still exists on New Hampshire Avenue up near University Boulevard, several restaurants, and several just kind of carry-out stores, and it's a carry-out store and a VFW. The Montgomery County side had a history of not having any alcoholic beverage licenses until the late 18, 1980s, when there was interest in having some restaurants that would have permit beer and wine consumption on-site. And a referendum was held in the city of Tacoma Park, which concluded that there was a desire to allow those alcoholic beverages to be allowed on-site. forward in the state legislature and approved, which did allow those licenses. And those licenses, once Tacoma Park became all in Montgomery County, those three licenses applied across the city. There's a Class B on sale beer and light wine hotel and restaurant, a Class H on sale beer and light wine hotel and restaurant, and a Class B on sale beer, wine, and liquor hotel and restaurant. And my understanding is that they all require food as part of the activity on the site. And you can't buy a beer and take it off-site or a bottle of wine and take it off-site.
Do you know what the difference between the B and the first two, the B and the H are?
One has, one allows liquor sales.
Hmm, that looks like that's between B and second B.
Oh, the B and the H, I'll have to look at the details, but there's different prices and there's sizes.
It could be an issue of the number of tables that are required for seating, the amount of food that needs to be served. I don't recall the specific difference, but each one has very, very specific requirements.
It just strikes me as odd, you'd think that, you know, between B and H would be, as you said, the addition of the liquor, but it's not.
No, it's between the two Bs.
Yeah, it's kind of strange.
But this is, this is just the regulations for Montgomery County, and this is not including the regulations that are in state law. So it's enormously complex. Each of these has lots of details and rules and different provisions and exceptions. And as we go through, you'll find that any opportunity to change any of these requires a really close examination of implications of that change.
Do you know how many establishments have these within Tacoma Park?
I don't. I, I should find that out. I'll find that out. I do know how many have the ones that were grandfathered in on the Prince George's County side. I know there were four licenses grandfathered in. Those four licenses are still applicable, although I believe that the one that went to, it was a Class H T P on sale beer license that used to be with the Royal Bengal Restaurant. I think the restaurant that's there now, I've heard, does not, does not use it, does not sell beer.
But it could revive it?
I think it could, the way it's written, but that's something we'd have to look into. The, it does run with the property, and it's associated with that particular location. We do, as I said, still have a liquor store on New Hampshire Avenue. The VFW still allows on sale drinking of alcoholic beverages. And what was called the International Deli, and I'm not sure what it is now, on East West Highway, also does allow on and off sale. And I'm not sure that they do that anymore either. I think the new owners may not wish to pursue that. And so we've got this situation where the only, really, with those couple exceptions that were grandfathered in for Prince George's County, there's no opportunity to sale, to sell beer or wine as a carryout sale in Tacoma Park. The, there has been interest in the past few years of having that opportunity. And I think I'll have Ross Grisby from the Business Association speak to that in a moment. There've also been a few times when there was thought to be an opportunity to do off sale, where there was a strong community reaction. And the ones that I'm particularly familiar with are Manas. They had thought that they would be able to do off sale beer on Flower Avenue, and there was fairly strong reaction that, no, that wasn't permitted. And there was a lot of concern at that time from the Long Branch neighborhood in general, that they didn't want any more liquor stores or beer sales in the neighborhood. The other one was at the location that's currently the Quick Check Mart, which is on East West Ethan Allen and New Hampshire. There was a proposal for the International Deli on the other side of New Hampshire Avenue to move over to that location, go through state law and change and allow them to move their grandfathered permit. And we did not support them, and so we did not go forward to the state legislature. But again, that was an area where the neighbors, especially in the townhouses right behind there, were very concerned about that move. Conversely, there has, I have been approached by a number of people saying, gee, it'd be nice to have a wine shop. And so in general, in the past few years, that request has always come in a very inopportune time. It was just at the end of session, or, you know, sometime when it wasn't particularly good to do the community discussion before knowing what we wanted to do to bring forward to the state legislature. And this time, we're actually in a timely position to be able to talk about what the community might want, and if there's interest in changing the state legislation, to have a proposal in mind before the local bill deadline, which is in early September, which would be the normal process, to go to the Montgomery delegation, say this is something that we want, and then when the legislature is in session, to have that voted on. As with the actions in the late 1980s, there would be deference to the Tacoma Park City Council about your feelings on the matter. I think I'll turn it over to Ross, and I want to kind of let, tell why you've come to bring this issue up. It's all, it's all Ross's fault.
Several times a year, I get a call from someone interested in the possibility of opening something like a wine shop in the old Tacoma area. And so I've had several lengthy conversations with Sarah Danes about it. I've plowed through some of this code, trying to understand what's possible. And essentially, it's a nonstarter. So I've had enough of these calls and been buttonholed enough times on the street by people's residents, saying, it'd be really nice to have a good wine store, or someplace, something like a Dega in Silver Spray, or, why can't we do this? And so I sort of started these conversations with Suzy and Sarah, saying, what's the process look like? What does it take? I think the last time I called was the day Maryland session started. And it's like, you know what? We missed the timeframe this time. So I, I think there's interest. I know there are concerns, particularly about the sale of singles. I contacted through the recommendation from the Montgomery County Liquor Board, the city of Gatorsburg, because they have arranged voluntary agreements with businesses doing off-site sales. They're limiting the single, the sales of singles. And so I think that's maybe useful information in our conversation going forward. It's obviously not a prospect without concerns. But I think that there are enough examples in Montgomery County where a city has allowed cer- certain kinds of liquor licenses in certain parts of the town, but not all of it, or certain kinds of sales, but restrictions, for instance, on singles. And I, I think it's worth the conversation.
One of the things that I think is important is that it's similar to zoning categories. You can't pick and choose which owner you want for these licenses. The same business, you know, could be one that's just wonderful, or could be one that has a lot of negative effects on the community. And, and you can't say, well, I like, you know, Sheila, but I don't like Joe, and so, well, you know, only Sheila gets the alcoholic beverage license. I think that that's, and certainly there's a case where, you know, you might want Sheila, and Sheila gets it, and then Sheila sells out, and it goes to a new owner, or the son takes over, or whatever. And there's lots of cases of that, and all kinds of zoning issues, where the pledges that somebody gave at one point don't necessarily carry through. The issue with Gatorsburg, I did include the form that Gatorsburg asks its businesses to sign, which is a voluntary restriction, and it is voluntary. There's not a, a way to require or prohibit single sales or a variety of other things. And in fact, the legislation is very clear that you can't specify what size, you can't prohibit certain sizes of alcoholic containers, alcoholic beverage containers. So there's very, there's very interesting detailed regulations that do limit what a jurisdiction can prohibit. And so that's something you have to be very careful about. I did also include in here the description, part of the Montgomery, Montgomery County section of the state law, which describes the boundaries that Kensington has put on, as a geographic area where off-sale alcoholic beverage licenses are permitted. And that's been something that has been considered and discussed a little bit in Tacoma Park, that there might be a section of Tacoma Park that would be appropriate for off-sale. And then the question would be up to you as to, you know, is that a good section? And is that discriminatory against other sections that don't get it? Or is it seen as a good thing? That's a whole conversation that you'll need to think about in the different wards and the different sections of town. So it's, it's complex to think about. But it has been interesting to try to talk out what might be some options, and are there certain ways to craft things? I guess, Sue?
Just, before you go to Sue, if I can just add that on the, on what Kensington added, I know that I've talked with their mayor, and he was the one who put time in to lobbying in Annapolis to make those changes happen. And I won't say that I remember the number exactly correctly. But the, the sense that I got from talking with him was that he spent about 25 days during a session in Annapolis one year to get the bulk of the changes made, and then went back again the next year to refine it.
Yeah, there had to be some corrections.
And spent like another 10 days that year, spending the whole day in Annapolis to make those things happen.
Yeah, I think the geographic area was a fairly new concept in, for, for Maryland. There certainly are geographic areas that are kind of generic. There's, they say, in enterprise zones, or, you know, there's a variety of different kinds of categories that are generic. But actually identifying streets in the state code is, is a little bit unusual for this, for the alcoholic beverage code, as far as I can see. Sue, one of the things that, maybe you can talk a little bit about is your experience in working with, with these issues.
Well, I just wanted to say, first, historically, going back even earlier than Suzy's description of the history, is, you know, Tacoma Park was dry from any alcohol for about 100 years. And it wasn't until the mid 80s that there was this decision to, you know, very carefully allow restaurants, this in-house use rather than any kind of off-sale use. And then, of course, we had to make the adjustments at the time of unification, which Suzy talked about. But for the long history, we were, we were a dry city. I'm going to sort of share with you my, just my experience from having represented another town where there was a off-sale, an off-sale liquor entity that had gone under the kind of description that Suzy was saying, starting as a fairly good part of the community, you know, back in, I think, the 30s or the 40s, and then the children, and the children's children, it got worse and worse and worse, and became, this was in Mount Rainier, became a source of enormous problems for the town. And I represented the town trying to close it down. It took us 10 years to, to close Bass Liquor. And even though there was an enormous amount of crime, prostitution, drug use, I mean, it was just a terrible blight on the community. And I, the thing that worries me about the Old Town comparison to Mount Rainier is it was, it was something about being right on the district line that was very relevant, because people could stay later on the Maryland side. The hours of liquor, the liquor licenses are not subject to individual control. They would be part of the county licensing scheme. And the Maryland licenses, I think, were longer than the DC licenses. So a lot of people came across the border to continue their drinking and to become, you know, really problematic to the police force in, in Mount Rainier. So I, I don't mean to be biased. I try to be open-minded as your city attorney, but I must say, my experience with that situation makes me very, just concerned that you at least have your eyes open to the worst possible scenario that can, that can occur. All of us think of the idea of a nice wine store in Old Town as probably a very hopeful, sweet thing. But I just want you to remember that sweet things can turn very sour, and that they certainly did for this other community that I represent.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask to clarify. Sue, you said that the hours are a matter of Montgomery County, while the location is a matter of state code. Did I hear you say that?
No, all of it's, well, basically, the state code is the, is the way that all liquor licenses are ordained, but they're, they're, they're very county by county specific.
So you just mentioned, I just mentioned Mount Rainier, and the hours were later in Mount Rainier. Was that, is that?
That would have been Prince George's County.
That's, that's true. Might, it might be different than Montgomery, and I can look into that for you.
What I'm saying is, is the authority to set hours of operation at the county level or at the state level?
It's at the state.
It's at the state level, but it may vary county to county.
Right. I've included in the package the section from the state law related to Montgomery County.
I see. 11:00 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. the following day, and so forth, on the, on the, under the Montgomery County. I'm just astounded that, that they go to that level of detail at the state, county by county.
You have no idea.
The volume, the volume in the state code that includes the liquor license provisions is really, really thick. I mean, it's 100, it's certainly more than 100 or a few hundred pages.
And is there an administrative entity at the state that continues to review this and, and work with the mayor of Kensington when he comes up for 23 days? Or is, once it's, or is it in the situation where, once it's written down, everybody forgets about it until somebody has to come back and re-lob it?
Legislative Services drafts the provisions. And when we did the work on grandfathering and the licenses with unification, that took two years. And the, there was a gentleman who was an attorney in the Division of Legislative Services, whose expertise was the alcoholic beverage section. And so that's who we worked with for the two years to draft the language. So it's, I don't, he has retired. He, he went out at that time. We sent him out.
But it's not, it's not a board that you go before and have things changed?
No, no, each county has a Board of Licensed Commissioners.
And what's their power?
I was told by the county, Montgomery County License Commissioner's attorney, that what they would want is for us to work with them very closely, so that they don't have the situation that Kensington had. It seems like Kensington came in with its own drafting, which, which didn't meet certain legal obligations, and that's why they had, had to back a second year.
So we would want to work very closely with Montgomery County Division of, you know, the Board of Licensed Commissioners staff to, to make sure that it fit in with their kinds of, other professions.
But my point is that generally, the hours of operation will not vary from Tacoma Park to Kensington to Gatorsburg. That will be whatever the Class B license or the Class C license, you know, whatever the license category says. And it will be probably general to the whole, to that category throughout the county.
And if, if I can just add one little detail about your question about kind of how it's dealt with at the state. I was at a Neighborhood Association meeting last week, and one of our state delegates, Heather Mazzier, was there talking about kind of what she does in Annapolis. And she started out the evening by saying the legislature spends its time dealing with four big areas. And the first one that she mentioned was alcohol. And that that's what an awful lot of people spend an awful lot of time dealing with.
I think Chief Kukuchi does, too.
Councilman Robinson, to follow up on what Sue said, there's a major difference between the Board of Commissioners in Montgomery County and what they do in Prince George's County. And one of the things that you study for and learn in Montgomery County as you go up the ranks is, is the liquor laws. And working there as long as I did, I had a lot of dealings with the Alcohol Board. If we went after and targeted a restaurant or a place where they were selling, we got much more favorable response, because they were on our side. They didn't want to see places that were going to tear down a community. They worked very closely. And talking to my fellow officers, even coming back now with Prince George's County, they run into much more major problems than we face over here, when they want to try to close down a place. So they had problems a couple of years ago when they did shut down a bunch of them, and they got overruled. They haven't had the same. In Montgomery County, generally, if we get a, what I call a place, it becomes a problem with what I call selective enforcement. We've been very fortunate in either closing them down from the lack of business as a result of our enforcement, or we take them before the board, and the board is very favorable. They don't fool around, because they don't want this type of Montgomery County. So I've always found the board, and since I've been back, I don't see it's changing. They're easy to work with, in the sense that if there is a problem, once you issue a license.
On the other side, though, the, the Board of Licensed Commissioners has a dual role. And one of it is to promote the, the businesses that sell alcoholic beverages.
After all, the county sells.
The county. The county is the big wholesaler for every entity that sells alcoholic beverages in Montgomery County. And they also see it as an economic development part of the business. And it's something that we look at in, you know, we would look at in Tacoma Park as a way to help bolster businesses and that kind of thing. And so when you listen to the, I've sat through a number of hearings at the Board of Licensed Commissioners. And yes, they'll question somebody very closely, but they'll also, they won't just say, if you just go up to them and say, well, we don't like them here, that's not enough. There has to be tangible evidence. There has to be a reason that they have violated the rules. And it has to be quite clear.
And I remember that at least two instances in the time that I've been on the council where the city had to put a good deal of effort and time into working out issues with locations. And one of them, I'm not sure, I remember the name of the business at that time, but it was out at the Point at Carroll and University.
Anna's Cafe.
I wondered, I didn't know if it was Anna's Cafe or if it was something different. And the other one was over behind the old, whatever that theater is on New Hampshire Avenue, just below East West Highway. And the nightclub was Julissa's.
Yeah, Julissa's.
And there was a great deal of angst in that neighborhood about what was going on at Julissa's that I think was not even supposed to be serving alcohol, but it was alcohol going on in the parking lot behind the nightclub. So that when those issues do come up, they can get to be pretty major things pretty quickly.
And you need to know that you'll have to have a good documentation, but it can be done. And generally, I mean, when people come in today, they wanna partner with the city and with our business community and they wanna work with you. I mean, since I've been here, if we've had a problem, the owners have been very positive and working with us and realizing that, you know, we're not gonna allow this in our community. So from the standpoint, I think it's something that can be enforced. And I think, I'm well aware of what you have to take before the board. And you're definitely right, you just can't say, oh, we don't like you. You've gotta have documented evidence. But they do respond to that.
Councilmember Simmons and Councilmember.
Thank you. Mayor Williams mentioned Anna's Cafe. And I know that there was a new restaurant in there now that the gentleman came in here and talked before the council, wanted to open a family restaurant there in that place, but wanted to serve onsite. And since then, I know we've had incidents of problems there. And I wonder, has that been resolved? You said that, you know, the owners want to work with the community, but are we, have we had incidents recently at that site?
We had two incidents, which the council's aware of. I know Ms. Matthews, maybe you're aware of them. We had a sit-down with them, our officers, the beat officers have been in there talking. We haven't had one incident since.
There haven't been any other calls for service at that location?
Not of the nature. I mean, there's calls in that area, but not for the restaurant, no.
Not at the restaurant?
Not for fights or anything else, right. Since the two incidents that you were made aware of, and I was asked to talk to them, we haven't had any more problems.
Yeah, I talked to the owner afterward and he was very interested in making sure there were no more incidents.
Okay.
And we continue to monitor and we do have off-duty officers that do work there on the weekends.
That work at the restaurant?
They work in the parking lot.
At the family restaurant. That's kind of an interesting dynamic, isn't it? I think it would be helpful, you talk about documentation as we look at this, to get some sense of those places in Tacoma Park that do serve alcohol and kind of what the calls for service are, you know, within a radius of those establishments. But I think it would also be helpful, since we don't have so many locations at the, within the city that sell for off-site consumption, I think it would be helpful to get a couple of examples from like the, within, you know, whatever you think, 500 feet of the liquor store there, the county liquor store, Flower and Piney Branch, and whatever other off-site sales locations you think would be indicative of what we could expect.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit. The statistics will be very useful, but having lived close to the liquor store for some time, which I do, there's been change over time and it does come down to enforcement. We've not had significant problem in our neighborhood for several years because we've had several different things go on. One is there's been some good police enforcement, the sobering team goes around, which has helped. And then there's required by Montgomery County and extra enforcement is to get it, is put on in the Long Branch neighborhood about the rules about who you sell to. You know, you don't sell to somebody who's inebriated, you know, there's a variety of kind of, of the rules for the clerks that as long as there's lots of education, it really does help. And so it would be interesting to see the statistics, but I certainly have seen just from my own view, what happens when you have good enforcement.
Right. And I also hear you saying that there's extra costs associated for the city for enforcement and monitoring.
I think, I think that's true.
And outreach around those facilities.
I think that that's very true.
Councilmember Roy.
As part of what Councilmember Simmons asked for, I think it'd be very interesting also to make sure it's broken down by the different areas of the city. So I'd be curious to hear from you, chief, since Olive Lounge is opened, which is the beer and wine bar attached to the back of the Medley Express Restaurant. Have we had any calls for service to that location since then?
No, not there. The area, I mean, I can give you an idea right now because I actually sent something to the city manager tonight. There are certain areas in town where there's been an increase in activity, which is more, basically in Ward 6 right now. We've got some issues. But the further you get away from there, I mean, when you look at the junction in Old Town, it's different areas and there's not a lot of places there, but I don't see the same problems occurring there because there's different populations that are obviously using the businesses there as opposed to what's going on down the crossroads where there's some problems. And obviously, we're targeting certain areas now and looking at the places. I can tell you, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I know the numbers are gonna be higher in Ward 6. And as you go further away from Ward 6, they're gonna be lower. And that's just the nature of the activity and what we're seeing. And it's the same thing with crime right now in the city. So, I mean, that's something that I'm well aware of. I'm not gonna tell you it's perfectly, nobody's making problems because there is some problems right now in certain areas, but not in the areas that we're discussing right now.
Councilmember Simmons.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, yeah.
And I do wonder if that, if somehow the off-site sales relates to that? Because you have a number of places that sell off-site in Langley Park area and it, and not so many in the Old Town area. But if you go a little bit further into the District of Columbia, again, you have the liquor store there and they have problems in that area.
I would tell you, the problem comes from the one liquor store that's on New Hampshire that was grandfathered in. And we have a pretty good relationship with the owner and we are doing a lot of work with him. And then it goes, you gotta go down University Boulevard, but the Tik Tok is a major problem for the whole Prince George's. And because a lot of people go down there and bring it back. We know that for a fact and it's been an issue with Prince George's County. They've had them before the liquor board there on numerous occasions. Allegedly, they're supposed to be doing better, but we can generally track where most of our alcohol coming. If it's not coming from the liquor store there, then it's down University and mainly the Tik Tok.
And I'm saying, if you go over in the District of Columbia, you have a similar thing. You have a liquor store there and around that liquor store, you have problems.
Problems from DC.
We don't have problems.
Yeah, we don't have problems. I don't think it comes back. You'd have to look at PG, it's producing some of our problems right now in the liquor store right there on, in New Hampshire Avenue. It was, you know, but the owner is good, he's been in to see me. We're visiting quite regular to make sure he's following the rules there, but we got a lot on the go down and bring it back. And as you all know, we have problems at our beach. And we continue to enforce it.
The Grassy Hill.
Yes, Grassy Hill. I think that, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
I just had a few follow-up questions, but if you've got something on that point, feel free to share.
No, I was just gonna talk about some of the next steps.
So is, it seems like in many things, maybe this isn't true in the alcohol enforcement laws, that we can't do less than the laws that exist, but we could add on something in addition, right? And I'm wondering, so if you took like a zoning law, right, we could make, we could have something that's slightly more restrictive as a city and potentially seek to enforce it. So I'm wondering.
This is an area where I don't think you can.
I think that the place where there seems to have been, thanks to Kensington, some ability to shape things is the geographical piece, that you could have a license just for Old Town, for example, rather than for the whole city. But in terms of the hours or the other kind of regulations that would go, they're set by the type of license classification. We don't have control over them. The only technique that seems to have been tried by Gatorsburg of doing these voluntary agreements is, you know, is one idea, but it's not compulsory.
And then the second thing, because I looked at Poolsville, they actually, their process is that they put it forth for a vote to the entire population if someone's gonna apply for something, right? Is it, so that seems like there's an added level of approval basically for a license. Could we propose something that basically says, I don't know if it's this body or we have a commission that?
I think you need state legislation.
Yeah, no, it's.
Because like Damascus is dry and every, about every eight years, they have a referendum whether.
But that's what, in the state legislation, there's this section on Poolsville, I think, that says in your document.
Well, it says you can choose whether or not to have alcoholic beverage licenses, but not, it's not to a particular.
Yeah, it's a class of licenses, not a particular applicant.
It's not a particular applicant.
Okay.
But doesn't each applicant go to the county?
But in theory, if the legislature agreed to it, they could write into the code that to get a license in Tacoma Park in addition to going through Montgomery County, you would have to, you'd have to have council approval or something.
Well, what I think that, I guess what I recommend at this point is that as, if there's a wish list of things to investigate, we can put that together. As I said before, it's enormously complex. There's also very strong political actors at the state level related to alcoholic beverage licensing and so they may not, you know, we may just hit a brick wall in some aspects. But we don't know where all those are.
Yeah.
And so we would need to go through and identify. And to me, I think the best way to do this is to say, if there is some desire for having an opportunity in a particular area or a particular class of alcoholic beverage licenses for Tacoma Park, that that direction kind of be given to investigate and we do some investigation and come back and, you know, with some reports on that. The timeline that we're facing here is that probably you would wanna have some kind of a public forum before you would go on recess so that, because we need to have something to propose to the local legislation, for local legislation in early September. And so, you know, it's a relatively quick timeframe. If there's a couple of options and if there's a group that you wanna pull together that kind of feel some of this stuff out in conjunction with the staff and legal counsel, you know, I think that may be the most useful approach to try to talk out some options, think about it, and then have something that can be kind of put out to the community as a proposal or a couple of options so that that discussion can take place. One of the things that I haven't mentioned here really is for 15 years while working for Tacoma Park, I have come across people who are just absolutely against having alcoholic beverage sales in this community. And so when people ask me about it, I traditionally told them it's very unlikely. I've seen a little bit of different feelings in the past couple of years. But I, I know that in the past, it was really strong. And so it's something that, you know, in your wards, in your discussions of the various business folks and whatever, you need to talk it out and see if there is a consensus for something and to try something and we all investigate it.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm back to the kind of a couple of structural aspects. Do I have it right that in Prince George's County, their licenses are granted for a specific business and then that license travels with the business over time? And that there are a certain, a discrete number of licenses that are allowed? Whereas in Montgomery County, there is no discrete or limited number and you can apply, a business can apply for a license and not be subject to that restriction? Do I have that right?
It certainly was the, it certainly was the case at the time of unification. I haven't seen if it's changed, but one of the big, that was the reason that it took us two years to craft the language. Because in Prince George's County, there was a cap on the number of different licenses that were issued by the county. So once you've got one, it was part of your business assets. The one for International Deli was estimated at being valued at about $30,000 and they didn't wanna just lose it. And so part of the, part of the switch over was to allow them to continue to retain it as a business asset and something that could be then passed on within Prince George's County. In Montgomery County, there isn't that cap. You have criteria that you have to meet, you go through a board hearing, but there's not a cap on the number of licenses.
Okay, I've noticed that when restaurants in Tacoma Park, it seems a little bit more likely that they'll drop the license and then bring it back or somebody else. It doesn't look like there's a lot of financial jockeying for position to get licenses in Old Town.
They're fairly inexpensive.
Fairly inexpensive, okay. So in Montgomery County, that's not the issue that it may be in Prince George's.
No, the prices are like $200 to $400.
Okay, okay, that's good information. I guess from my point, from my point of view, part of the analysis would be, I know we have seven kinds of licenses and three are Montgomery County specific and four are Tacoma Park specific. I'd like a little spreadsheet of which ones are which and also what would, if you know, if you can guess at what the pros and cons are of eliminating all the Tacoma Park ones, like why would that be a bad idea or a good idea? And just going with the Montgomery County style licenses.
I think the answer is we'd be taking away that thing that was of value that got grandfathered in.
No, that's different. They kept, the folks who had the Prince George's County licenses maintained their Prince George's County licenses as a business asset. And in addition, got a special Tacoma Park, Montgomery County license.
So they could still sell what they had back into Prince George's?
That's correct. The four TP licenses are just for those specific locations. So there's a maximum of four TP licenses.
I see.
There are many Montgomery County licenses and we'll get the information, the list of who's got them and what kind there are.
Okay, now I think I see that those four TP licenses, there are exactly four.
There are four.
So that's not so much of a consideration for us. Really what we're focusing on is the Montgomery County licenses.
That's correct.
And there are more than just these three. Am I right?
Those are the three types. And multiple, many businesses could have a Class B.
But I don't see the types that are on off-sale in the first three that you have there.
Because none of Tacoma Park in Montgomery County is allowed to have off-sale.
Okay, so that's what I, I guess that's.
Therefore, this would be what we were talking about.
This would be why it requires state legislation.
If anybody new wants to do off-sale.
My question, yeah, my question is, what are all the types of licenses in Montgomery County? I'd like to see what that is.
Okay.
So that we know what our options are.
Sure.
Yeah, because I went to the, when this came up originally this time, since I've been on the council, I went to the website and they list the licenses, but it doesn't, it's a lot, it's very confusing still. Like it doesn't really tell you what it allows you to do.
It's very confusing.
So it would be good to have more. I would just say I'm sensitive to the concerns that alcohol, you know, sale, off-site sales can drive enforcement and crime issues. But I also think that there is a potential to have in certain parts of the city, businesses like that, that won't drive a lot of that. And so I would like to figure out a creative way to structure it so that there are certain places in the city, in particular in my ward, Old Town, where I think, not for liquor, but for beer and wine type store. It can be successfully financially and help with revitalization and is environmentally conscious because it gives people something to walk to to get these types of alcoholic substances and at the same time not create a burden on the city's enforcement. So I imagine there's lots of different ways you could structure that or some number of ways you can structure and investigate it. So hopefully we can do that. And I also like the idea that we have a public process or discussion about this. And maybe that can be, camera one, the council chamber is supposed to close to start renovation, but it might be something where we actually go out to the bar.
Okay.
No, I was suggesting maybe more, you know, there's some places in Old Town like the Van Studio where they had the, the presentation about the new restaurants, that something like that could be held and making more accessible to the people in the neighborhood.
And, and if I can just add that, I think I agree in general with Councilmember Wright's points and I think the important parts there are that, that my sense is that we would be talking about a beer and wine license, not a beer, wine and liquor license, and that it would be geographically constrained. Councilmember Simmons.
I would just say, I think it's been clear from my questions, I'm not supportive of this and I think that there are other things that this council should be dealing with that are higher priority than something that has been demonstrated in many, many neighborhoods, not to be a positive addition. I would say, no, I'm not interested in putting in the, the resources to research this.
Councilmember Simmons.
In general, I agree with Terry on this one. I think there are places nearby, near enough to Tacoma Park to buy liquor, wine and, beer, wine and liquor. You know, even right near Ward Wine, just around the corner from the metro, you can buy nice stuff. So I'm, I'm not especially interested. I'd have to see a groundswell of, you know, public sentiment before I got more interested because I've, I've heard from the, I definitely have heard from the opposed camp.
Councilmember Wright.
I would just say that, that liquor store across the metro doesn't have very good wine selection.
So it needs to be a criteria.
And actually, I'm not up on this, but I know it used to be the case that there were potentially restrictions about purchasing and carrying across state lines, beer, wine, alcohol, et cetera, and it was always the question of enforcement and whether it could happen and...
I can assure you that one hasn't been enforced in weeks.
But, but it's still on the books.
I'd have to look. Fireworks, I'm real up to date on, you can't do. But I don't, I don't think alcohol, I'd have to go back and look at the...
How about cigarettes? I think there's probably a quantity issue right there.
Right? If, if we can find out whether that's still on the books.
I want to know because as an elected official, I have never wanted to know.
I, and I...
Yeah, I think under my name.
I guess maybe one thing that would be helpful at this point would be to see, I heard two colleagues say basically, don't put any more time or effort into this. Does anybody else want to at this point say that same thing?
I'll, I'll comment that, I'm of two minds about it, but I think from the point of view of the junction, which is in my ward and would have the most impact, it's worth looking into. So I'm not going to say...
I, I agree. I think it's worth a little more research. I'm not sure where we'll go with it, but I think a couple more questions back and it may, and it may be that the end result of this is that we say, you know, given the time constraints and the fact that we would have to go in early September and we're on break in August and, you know, maybe it doesn't go to the legislature this year, but maybe there's some further refinement and, you know, it can go out as part of a city survey or, you know, as a non, I can't even remember now whether we can even do non-binding questions on the ballot. You know, gee, give us your opinion. Yeah, those kinds of things where we could get some, some input, some further, some time for further education about particular issues since we've seen how complicated it can be. But I think a little further research at this point is worth it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as you noted earlier, it's, the deputy city manager gets to do a number of items tonight, which hopefully is, it, it makes it hard for preparation for a meeting, but hopefully it makes it so that you get it all in one shot and then you don't have to keep coming back in dribs and drabs.
It's fine.
So we're now going to talk about the direction on monitoring Tacoma Metro development.
That's right. We've been working on monitoring the proposed development Tacoma Metro for 10 years now and we've gone through a number of phases in terms of working with or opposing, trying to convince Womata and the FTA...
Engaging with.
Engaging not to approve the development proposal. Both FTA and Womata have approved the concept of development at the Tacoma Metro site. It's now at a place where development proposal would be submitted to the DC government for its development review process. There's been some discussion in the past from council about what staff's role should be at this point. The last direction was simply kind of an observing role. Nevertheless, there's been a position by the city council to protect and to work hard to advocate for preservation of transportation access at the Tacoma Metro. And the question that I, I'd certainly like to know, we as staff would like to know, is what direction does the council want to make on this in terms of staff's monitoring or participation in the development review process to continue to advocate for the position of the council? Kind of off the top of my head, I gave a few options here that, to try to flesh out some things that you might choose and these aren't, they can be manipulated however you wish, but one is the first kind of observation role, which is simply monitoring what's going on somewhat at a distance when plans have been submitted so that they're available for public review, do the public review and make comments to you and recommendations to you at that time. All of these would likely end up in writing resolutions and letters and those kinds of things for the DC review process. The second kind of middle level of activity is, is to do the, is to monitor the process, but try to participate a little bit in terms of being present at development review discussions with the developer or with the staff in DC Office of Planning or Store Preservation folks, share the council's concerns about transportation-related accessibility, especially if asked, you know, what's the city council's position on this, and bring back those observations. So there would be a little bit more participation in the room, not just looking over the plans as they've been submitted. A third, more active role is one that would be close to what we would do if we were doing the review, which is to participate in the meetings, to ask questions of the developer, to give suggestions, to raise concerns, to identify kind of good planning techniques and those kinds of things. And when there is a subject area that there's not been direction on by the city council, to bring that subject area back to the city council for direction as to a position to bring back to the others, to the staff, to share with them. So those are kind of three levels of engagement that a staff person could do in the development review process. And as you go up, it's more time involved. The, the finer, the, the more time-consuming one has a certain benefit in that a lot of work often gets done at a staff discussion level, but that may be something that you're not comfortable with in terms of, it may feel like working with the developer when there's a desire not to have the development. And so those are, there's pros and cons to that, that you should consider and I'm interested in your comments. And I don't know, is there any other comment that...
I, I just wanted to tell you the sort of little shorthand I just wrote in the margin here that might be helpful. The first one is you're just reviewing by paper, very remote. The second, you're in the room. And the third, at the table. And I think those are very different sorts of ways of approaching this and it really would be helpful for the council to give staff direction.
And I saw a number of hands going like this, both sides, so I've been going that way tonight. I'll start this way. Councilmember Simmons.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm glad we're talking about this now. I think we've had, I have sort of a couple of thoughts. I think we've had plenty of indication from the public that they support a very active participation by the city. Whenever we've had any kind of public hearing or presentation, the vast majority of the people support a very active role for the city. So I favor an active role myself. I think that the most active option does two things. One, it communicates very directly to all those involved, Metro, UYA, et cetera, what our position is, if we're, if we're in your face, to use the shorthand version of this, you know, if we're always calling and asking and always present and submitting materials and so on. Communicates our position very well. And second, I believe that our presence, our action, our phone calls, our pressure will inflat, in fact, influence the outcome. Whether it will be an outcome that we would be happy with, I certainly can't say, but I believe it would be a better outcome, having devoted this kind of effort. So for those essentially three reasons, I, I really strongly favor going all out here.
And I'll go back and forth with Councilmember Wright.
Sure. First, I want to say thank you for coming here to try and get clear direction. I know in those projects in the past, we've maybe had some confusion about what was supposed to be done and this led to things like a survey going out that the council didn't approve of. So I appreciate that we've, you've come forward and asked for clear direction. The thing that's a little confusing to me about that is that I feel like I'm being asked to make a decision about a process which I don't have an understanding of because I feel like we actually, I didn't have time to go back and see what tape it was, but I'm pretty certain during council comments, it was brought up and requested and everyone on the council, the audience gave nods, what they wanted to have happen is for us to go and understand, yeah, sure, ask clarifying questions about the process is and any information about what's been going on, on the DC side and, but no, not to advocate for a particular position yet. We weren't giving you the leeway to do that, but I feel like we gave pretty clear direction about that. So now I kind of find it hard to make a judgment out of this because I don't have, I've never been reported back to about that. My sense is that it didn't happen, but maybe it happened and we just haven't gotten a report back.
Basically, one of the things that I didn't mention and I should have mentioned was that this is pretty much reliant on the good graces of the DC Office of Planning. And so when, when I would speak with folks before, trying to follow up on your request, they, their response was, well, there's not a public file yet because an application's not been filed and the last we heard, you're considering suing and so we'd rather not have a conversation. And so I didn't get the information. So that, so in terms of kind of any substantive data about where they were, that kind of thing, it was very polite, but it was, it's not, it's, there's not been an application submitted yet and so we're not in a position to speak with you.
But why wouldn't we then call Jim Graham's office? Because he very clearly in the Womata hearing said that, and I think Womata voted on this, that they would, they want DC to include us in the process.
Yes.
We're never, we're never giving up our right to take legal action. We have no idea what is going to come out of the process or what the final site plan is like. So yes, someone always has the potential for suing until they haven't, time has expired and they haven't sued or they've signed something that says, we won't sue you. So...
This has to do with, this has to do with the, about when something is open to the public. I, I didn't call Jim Graham's office. However, I would think that the answer would be that once the application is made public, then yes, they had made it clear that they would like to have our involvement in that process.
But one reason you, just excuse me for interrupting, one reason you call is because just the mere act of calling sends a message.
I appreciate that.
And I also think, I'd be surprised if they say, we're not going to share any information, but what is even the process, right? Like they must have, I know Harriet Tregone in a meeting that I went to said the process could take 17 months to 24 months to 14 months.
Right, and I did provide the information about what their process is. So that was something that I've got to hand out. I'll, I'll make sure that you all get the copy again of, of what the process is for that.
Okay.
Sure.
I just want to remind the council that I think the other big change since that earlier discussion, I agree, Councilmember Wright, that this direction for class, for, for staff had been made at an earlier point, but it was before the FTA ruling. And I think that that is, was sort of a pivotal change and that I think this is a new regime right now that we do need to, to have clear direction.
No, no, I, I hear that, but the fact that we asked to have something carried out and it either wasn't carried out or we never got a full report back about it, isn't any different and that information would actually be helpful in allowing me to decide A, B, or C. So it leaves me in the same position of, like, my vote is for the same thing as before, which is, yes, go listen, ask questions, participate and figure out what's going on, but no, I don't want to have, I don't want to give the leeway to have a policy, particular policy advocated for you at this point.
I guess, I guess my response to that would be that I, I do want to have a particular policy advocated before, advocated for, which is to preserve access to transit.
Access to what?
Access to transit, which has always been our position. And however we can do that, in whatever way, at whatever stage in any process, I would like us to be in there to do that.
So if you wanted to say at a very high level at this point, yes, our interest is in preserving transit, fine, but I get worried when, when we don't really know the process, we don't really know what's on the table around that, because in the past, there's been things that might have been suggested as improving access to transit, which have their pluses and minuses about transit.
Sure.
Particularly the Nelson Nygaard Plan. And I say that with knowing that we were going about that with the best intentions and there was an aspect of getting the county on board also. But yes, so I agree with you that at a high level, yes, we want to preserve transit. That's one of our, our biggest and most important focuses and includes pedestrian safety and handicap access and all that sort of stuff. But I guess before I even know kind of what's on the table, I feel hesitant to say I would give the leeway to, to advocate for specific alterations to a plan and negotiation.
But I guess...
I'd say staff, but at least at our level, understanding what...
And I guess my thought on that is we won't know what those questions are unless we're at the table.
Yeah, but you can go be at the table, which I, which I said before in the session, but not commit to or advocate for some specific aspect of a plan.
But what I heard described was that if there were things that got to that level that staff would come back to us for direction.
Well, that's one of the possibilities here, right? C is...
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Councilmember Wright, you're talking about kind of the category B where I would express the general concerns of transportation and as items come back, I report what those things are that I've seen on the table and that kind of thing, that there wouldn't be, other than a very generic kind of, we're concerned about transportation access and, and I would say that if asked, then other than that, I would just bring back what I've heard to you.
Right. And if I can just add at this point that I think one of the things that I would like to try and get past now is a feeling at various times, earlier in this process, where I think we've, we've known that things were coming to a head at a particular point in the process and we advocated very strongly... and we advocated very strongly for whatever we needed to at that particular point in time. But when the decision went not in the way that we hoped it would, we were left kind of shaking our heads going, how can they do what they did when it was very clear to us that we had a clear understanding of it and we had a good position and we made good points that they couldn't refute? And they've just gone ahead to the next step in the process and kind of ignored us. And I feel like if we are more engaged, more at the table with a little bit of additional insight into what's going on in some of the particulars, rather than just being left with the end result that we don't like, that we might be in a better place. Councilmember Robinson.
Well, I'm going to draw a line between this discussion and the Tacoma Theater, for what it's worth. And I see a real, I think we have a real interest, strong interest in making sure that that other side of the metro station thrives. And that this, maybe this is, without getting into the particulars on what we learn and what's brought back to us and how we deal with that, I'd like to see a continuing effort to understand the mindset of the district government so that we can pursue an improved Fourth Street Corridor. And so I'm more partial to your option C, so that you're, and even going beyond C, so that you can keep your ears tuned to what's going on about the Fourth Street Corridor. And to the extent that access to transit plays into that, that it's a way to make that point, then I certainly, I promote making that point. And I hope I'm not stretching too far into another issue here. But to me, the overriding, an overriding issue beyond the politics of how the metro will play out, an overriding issue is the health of both sides of the metro.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you. I guess this is a question for Josh. I got a little, I got a little confused by some of your comments. I think I was misinterpreting them. I thought the option C was that included, I should say, it included that when there were places where they needed direction, when the city needed direction, the council, they would come to us. In other words, that phrase in here, as new issues arise, raise those issues with the council to obtain direction. I read that to mean that if something, yes, we have given them general guidance, but if something very specific came up, they would come to the council and we would give them direction.
I certainly, just as a clarification, I would always do that. I think that it's, I'm never comfortable in meeting with anybody who's applying for anything or whatever.
I understand that. I was thinking, I thought Josh was thinking lesser than that.
Maybe I misread this, but as I took new issues arise, to me that meant, might be unrelated to transportation issues, right? So what I read here was, work with developer review team and development review team and developer identified solutions, issues and concerns with the Home Park Council, right? We've already raised the concerns about transit. So the way I read that, and then there's a semicolon, which I usually take as a separate thought, as new issues arise, raise those issues with the council to obtain direction. So what I read there, and my grammar is not the best, was that say something related to environmental impact, which we made less clear what our position is on, then they would bring that back to us. But something like, so I want to be very, very, very clear that I want there to be a lot of leeway to have discussions, to understand where the other side's coming from, to ask questions. But I don't want, at this point, negotiation to occur around elements of the plan without it coming back to us. I guess that's the clarity direction for you. That's not to say at some point the council may in the future say, because negotiations can be very back and forth and hard to do in a, you know, once a week manner. We may, at some point in the future, give more leeway around negotiations, but I'm not comfortable doing that at this time. That's my.
Okay, okay.
And I guess I'd like to clarify. I mean, I think there are things that we've discussed that are transportation specific that I'm pretty clear where you stand on. There are other things that are transportation related that I'm not quite as clear. And there may be some discussions about, I don't know, a different route of buses or something through the area that may have impacts that I would want to bring back to you. But you're correct that there could be an issue where, and this would actually occur in any of these cases, where all of a sudden, rather than have the park, the village green, it's changed into something else. And, you know, no trees or whatever. I mean, that would be something that you would want to know about and you may at that point decide to take a position on it. But, you know, so I certainly would tell that about at any time. But clearly, if there's, if there's something that I don't feel like I know, have a really good comfort level of where you stand on it, I would want to share it with you and get direction.
Whether it's transportation related or not transportation.
That's right. That's right. I think that with C, there's a broader thought of transportation and kind of some give and take on where a road goes or whatever than certainly A is. But I still, my intention and expectation is always to share it back and forth because it only really works if that happens.
Great, I mean, yes, as long as we're not negotiating or committing or sharing back and forth.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you. I, it's difficult when things are so kind of nebulous.
It is.
To, you know, do I like A, B, or C? And I feel like I'm playing that show game where I'm not sure what's under any one of them. I'd say my first thing is, I take a look at the fiscal impact and I see that some options require larger commitments than others. And I think that goes without saying, but the, I think, from my perspective, what I would like to do at this time, you know, different staff members and different types of commitments, the meter runs at different speeds. And so at this point, I think I would like to just say that I would like to minimize the city attorney's involvement going forward, unless the council has some specific action that we're asking the city attorney to take. And other than that, based on the discussion here tonight, I think I could support C. But I'm feeling real weak on picking between any one of these at this point. There's still too much like Play-Doh. I'm not sure what it is.
Is that with DOH or TO? Let me just say that it sounds like I'm hearing general support for the language that's embodied in C. And I heard some, I think, very helpful discussion about getting a sense of what that entails in terms of staff making commitments. And that there wasn't really a sense that staff would do that. It was that as questions came up, staff would come back to us. And I started out thinking C, but it was very helpful to have that clarification, particularly of your concerns. Are you comfortable with where we are? Okay, so I think we have agreement, option C. And as, as questions come up, staff will come back to us. And we'll, we'll see where we can go with that and.
And you're free to change at any time as we go through this, if there's something that comes up. But I appreciate it very much.
We seldom do that.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, my presence here wasn't to say we were, as city attorneys, getting ready to get re-engaged in any deep way with any of this. It was more because of our past involvement, really being concerned about this kind of a decision being made clearly for staff. And I appreciate it being made well tonight. Thank you.
And I would like to mention though, something that's very important, regarding the legal assistance. And that, once there is a defined site plan, especially one with contour lines, that we can really see what the ADA impacts are. The implications of that may involve some legal advice. And I, and we certainly will come back to you. But that's an area in particular where we've been waiting to see that data, that, the detailed site plan, so that we have some good comments to make on that.
And maybe this is a good point to just mention next Monday. And also to, if you do that, and then I have one quick thing to add to that.
Sure. So next Monday, as a reminder to my council colleagues and anyone who's out there, and of course, the city staff, on Monday, the eighth, at five PM, a bunch of residents have invited us to take a tour of the site. And I think they've done, given that there's not an exact final site plan done, they've done the best job possible at figuring out where the kind of major elements of the site will change. So, you know, two areas I think are of particular concern are what happens at that front entrance? So how close is the bus drop off lane to the front entrance? And that, it's a pretty large space now, how much it shrinks. And then I think another example is what happens over near where the buses or cars come out on Cedar? Because it's actually, the way they cut away the hill and shrink the road, it actually makes that intersection with the stop sign very, very tight. So a couple, I think, key places that they want to sort of walk off the measurements and show us. I think our great reporter from the Gazette, Jeremy Arias, is going to be there as well to partake in that. So it's at five because we have a six o'clock session, closed session. But it should take about forty-five or fifteen minutes.
I'd like to also mention, when you look at the entrance, if you, if you, when you go out there, you'll see two different sections where there are steps. And identifying how close the new curb is to those steps that front onto the side street there, very important for the handicap accessibility. And that's something, look at the grade changes right there. I think it's really quite notable.
And the last thing I'll just add is the resident's intention is to invite elected officials from the ANC, that are Sarah and Faith, but not to invite, at this point, a larger set of DC elected officials because of the, as we're trying to understand, and we don't necessarily want to get into an argument about the substance at this point, we kind of just want to understand. And since Sarah and Faith have been more aligned with our position than many of the positions of the other elected officials in DC, I think that makes sense.
And just to let you know that I believe there's been some contact between the, some various officials to make sure that Metro doesn't kind of go, hey, what's going on here?
We don't need a Homeland Security.
Right. So the chief has been in contact and I believe there's a letter for me to sign tomorrow to send to John Cato just to make sure that everybody is aware and that there are no problems that way. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last item, again with the city manager, is discussion of the potential legislative action requests to be submitted for MML legislative priorities.
Yes, every year, we get prepared for the legislative session and this particular topic is suggestions that we make to the Maryland Municipal League for their priorities. Generally, those priorities are, and Mayor Williams, this member of the legislative committee, can speak better to this, but the ones that seem to be more successful are ones that have some statewide applicability and that help municipalities, a number of municipalities at the same time. We certainly will have legislation that's more specific to Tacoma Park that we go through from our own recommendations. But these are for the, to encourage the Maryland Municipal League to prepare their priorities. In the past, we've been very successful with our recommendations. I think we haven't had a year for some time where our recommendations weren't the priorities. And so we've either been for enhancing revenue options, which is a good generic one, but very important, especially I think, my sense of the Maryland budget next year is that it's going to be worse. It's still in the recovery, it's not quite at the recovery stage yet. So using the opportunity for those discussions to try to get some structural things to help municipalities do their own revenue generation is very useful. The other thing that we've been successful in the past has been on the electric energy aggregation, which there's still a lot of talk about. But I'm not sure that that's something that, the way that MML has its rules, if something's gone through within the past couple of years and didn't get anywhere, then they put a hold on it for a couple of years. And so my guess is that given their criteria, it's not likely to be one that would be adopted as a priority legislation. There were a couple of recommendations that I had heard. One is that Delegate Al Carr apparently had sponsored, did he sponsor? I guess he had legislation proposed last year, it didn't go anywhere. But piggybacking on the DC government's recent interest in having a bag bill, similar to the old bottle bills, where you pay five cents for your plastic bag and you don't pay it if you bring your, or you buy a reusable one or use a reusable bag. There's a proposal to have that in Maryland. And there's environmental benefits. How the revenue would go would be an interesting question, but obviously it would be nice if it came to municipalities. Another discussion, Councilmember Robinson, has been having some very interesting discussions about areas of the country which are encouraging people to be within municipalities and not just in unincorporated county areas as a better way to distribute funds and express interest in things. And we're not sure where that would go. And I'd be interested to know how the, what kind of a proposal we'd craft for that. But one of the things that, just as a side note, years ago, when we annexed some of Flower Avenue, so that we had all of the pavement and were able to do the speed controls on Flower Avenue, I remember speaking with a gentleman in Park and Planning who was like, well, it could be a thing where everybody's in a township or like in New Jersey. And I was like, yes, that's, and to him, it was just horrible. And it didn't seem that horrible to me, so.
And did he go, and did he go on to say that it could even be like Massachusetts, where everybody's in a municipality and they abolish counties?
So, yes, we can, we could go further. That's a new, a new concept. But I would like to, those are the things that I have heard as something appropriate for the legislative priorities. And I don't know if there's others that come to mind. Or what we will do is come back on June fifteenth to do a resolution related to those.
And if I can just speak for a minute to the, to the bag bill, I've followed that very closely and talked a good deal with DC Councilmember Wells about his bill. I know that it's up before the full DC Council tomorrow and I expect that it will pass. And it, Delegate Carr has been working closely with him as that has been refined. And the thought has been that it's harder for one particular jurisdiction to have that. And I know that people at various points have advocated for the city to have a bag bill of some kind. And I think that the opportunity is good, given the, what should be the passage of that bill by the district, to go with essentially the same bill for all of Maryland and have the vast benefit for rivers and the bay. The particular push for the bill for the district has been that a huge amount of the trash in the Anacostia River, which is, of course, our watershed, our plastic bags go to the Anacostia, which this is meant to clean up. It's all in the tributaries to the Anacostia. It doesn't necessarily get as big of impact on the kind of the river itself and you don't see it so much when it gets to the Potomac. But the, all of the bags, particularly the plastic bags, get hung up on the various things protruding into or near the river or the tributaries, the streams. As they flow quickly, it all gets hung up. And an interesting tie to our earlier discussion is that one of the big culprits is the non-recyclable. And an interesting tie to our earlier discussion is that one of the big culprits is the non-recyclable black plastic bags, which are distributed by liquor stores.
Was, in your discussions with Delegate Carr, did he see a particular benefit for municipalities that we can cite in the paperwork?
I'd have to think about that.
I think the question of like, who should get the revenue is going to come up, and I would advocate for a position where the revenue goes to cleaning up watersheds, Chesapeake Bay, because I think we all benefit from that. I mean, you could choose to use revenue to do a cleanup associate of a slide, although friends of slide, it's a very good job. So that's, I think that's a way to sort of take off the table of that, well, who gets the benefit? Is it the state? Is it the county? Is it the municipality? And just say that it goes into the fund to clean the bay or clean the water.
And some of that kind of comes back to, could come back to cleaning up those tributaries, which is the jurisdictions who do stormwater, and that can be counties, it can be municipalities. And therefore, partner with Mako and go in with a much stronger position. Dan?
On that point, yeah, I would, I would like to see it stay as local as possible, whatever the most local jurisdiction is, just to decentralize that. My impression of how the bay cleanup funds have been spent is that it's not been very successful. They get aggregated at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and then things don't happen. But that's, so that's a fear. And on the other one, on the broader issue of the counties, when I was speaking to the couple from Broward County at lunch at the Ickley Conference, they mentioned that Miami-Dade, the county just below, which, as I learned in the Milk movie last night, was where Anita Bryant had her first victory, off-topic, that they had been far less successful in extending municipal citizenship to everybody in the county than Broward had been. And Broward had been almost entirely successful to date. And that made me think that, you know, there are some counties maybe more interested than other counties in any place, and particularly in Maryland, in extending municipal citizenship to everybody. Every time I go to Silver Spring, I was there today, or yesterday morning, I'd look around and go, it's just astounding, this is not a city, because it looks, acts, and smells like a city, but there's nobody elected there. And so you can, you know, you can analyze the sense that if everyone was in a municipality, you can look at it in a number of ways. One, of course, is as a, in a democratic way, that if every place was a city, then there would be that many more elections, and there'd be that much more representative government, which I think would be good. But the way I think that the folks in Broward County are looking at it is that it allows the county government to do things that counties are good at, and I think in the ideal world anyway, it allows city governments the ability to do things that city governments are good at, and I think that would be a good discussion. But I don't know, I don't know how MML can try to put that discussion on the table, or if they'd be interested in, who would be interested in having that discussion. I'd be interested in having it, but I don't know who else would, so I kind of leave it to you to bring back some ideas on that, if you're so inclined.
Well, what I will do with all of these is prepare draft legislative action request forms. We're asked to fill out, you know, what the criteria was, or examples, and that kind of thing, and share that with you, and I'd love some feedback on that. The, I'm actually not going to be here on June 15th, and so a little bit of back and forth before then is very welcome. But I can also, I'll be able to make modifications, it doesn't need to be submitted until another week or so later, so there's time to do any changes you might have. But I think that one of the things that's useful is, once you look at these things, if you, if you get some new examples or ideas about a better way to make the claim, that's useful. And then what happens with the Legislative Committee is there's an opportunity to present the legislative action request at a committee, and that would be one where you might be very, the right spokesperson for the city of Tacoma Park and say, this is what I've heard, answer people's questions, and that kind of thing. And then the Legislative Committee takes a vote after they hear all the different presentations.
And if I can just add on that particular point, depending on what we might decide to put forward, there's an opportunity for a representative from the municipality putting forth the request to make a presentation. And depending on what the request is, if I'm on the Legislative Committee again next year, I can always do that, but there's also the opportunity for anybody else who might feel particularly strongly or well-informed about a particular issue to come make that couple of minute presentation. And that generally occurs in August, when the Legislative Committee does like a couple of weekly meetings to get going.
I've got nothing else to do in August.
Yeah, right. Councilmember Wright?
Two comments. One, I'm generally supportive of Councilmember Robinson's point, particularly because I think there's like a power imbalance between the counties and cities and the state. And if you look at the number of residents and what that means for votes, I think it's pretty hard to figure out a way to get it changed, but I think we should have the discussion. I think we should be careful about, I agree that there's this aspect of more democracy, and you can get sort of, you know, drive decision-making down, you often get decision-making that helps communities more effectively. But I think you also have to be careful about how you, how areas get segmented up into municipalities, because, you know, for example, one of the big problems in the country as a whole is that the funding of the education system, right? So the funding of the education system is driven by property tax values, and it so happens that the way we live in America, that poor people are more likely to live with poor people, and rich people are more likely to live with rich people. And so when you divide that up, what you get is these vast inequities in education funding. I know there's been things like Title I to try and rectify that, so I think we just have to be, I bring that up as just an example of, you have to be careful a little bit because you can get a situation where you have the haves and the have-nots divided up quite a bit, and predict, you know, if there's not a large state aid that kind of taxes everyone and then flows down to the counties, you can get into a situation where you also can have pretty severe inequities in service. So I think that's...
Well, I think that, you know, probably for Maryland, we would continue to advocate that counties are the body that run the school systems and not municipalities.
Yeah, absolutely, but you could also think about that along other lines, right? Like not just...
There's many, I can think of a lot of examples, right?
The way, the way you can figure, do the inequity thing is you do a reverse energy tax funding mechanism, where the more, the less energy you use in a locality, the more funding you get for your school system, which would then reward those folks who are most efficient.
Yeah. And that brings me to my second item, which is to do with just MML being more aggressive around energy efficiency and global warming. And I think there's two examples now, sort of, one above the state level by Van Hollen and one below at the county level by, mainly championed by Berliner. Both of them are looking at these, I think the county is actually sort of in existence now, and Van Hollen's proposed it, something that we've talked about before. Colleen actually brought it to my attention the first time, so she should get full credit for it. The idea that you use state bond bill money or some source of funding to create a revolving loan fund where residents can tap into that loan fund at a very low interest rate, and the way it gets paid back is through a special tax assessment, so that the, the benefit of the energy efficiency stays with the property, because when the property is sold, the tax assessment goes along with it, so it's paid back. And it also reduces default rates significantly, because if someone defaults, you know, they don't, they no longer own their house, basically, and someone else buys it and they still have to pay that. So I know Van Hollen has proposed at the federal level, I'm not sure where it is, in the House, and Roger and other people on the county council.
Right, the one in the county has been...
Yeah, I think they've actually put something in place, I'm not sure how much funding they've put in behind it, so.
It's fairly, it's a significant proposal.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it's a thing where it wouldn't cost municipalities to do it, and it's really hard for us to decide we want to do it ourselves, because I'm sure there's a whole set of kind of economies of scale associated with setting up a program and...
Well, I think, you know, one of...
But it does give us the individual ability as a municipality to encourage people to do it, and maybe there's some, you know...
I'll check with MML staff about, you know, what might make sense. There may be something about giving municipalities the authority to do something, perhaps jointly, or there may be other kinds of, just kind of...
I think it really requires, it would require state action to set up the source of funding.
I understand that, but I'm just, in terms of how, how we would fill out the form, what kind of, what we would be asking.
And when you do check with MML staff, if you can reference the Gatersburg request from last year about energy sufficiency and loan program that kind of was approved as one of the priorities and then kind of got changed. So it may be, it may...
So Gatersburg's more original proposal as opposed to what got changed?
If you can talk with MML staff about that and see what in, how in particular that changed and how that might affect what we put in.
And I realize this takes a fair bit more research, because it's a new concept, but I personally don't have the time to do it, but I think also looking at what Berliner's put together probably gives us a good sense of why.
Right. One of the things with this is, we put the requests in, and then there's some time back and forth with the staff. They also do some research on those things.
And that, and Berliner's program actually comes from Babylon along, in Long Island, where they have done it at the city level, not at the, not at the county level. So there is a precedent for using, for cities leveraging funds to put that kind of loan program in place. And they're quite, they're quite successful at it, and that's, that's where Roger got his inspiration, was from Babylon, New York. I have the guy, he also presented at Ickley, and I'll get that to all of us and to you, Suzy, that reference.
And as we know, many things that come from Colleen are related to Berkeley, and they've done it successfully. Berkeley's a large municipality, right? But that was larger, and they've done it successfully, particularly on solar panels.
And we're the Berkeley of the East.
So we'll get joint funding with the Berkeley of the West?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not bringing, not bringing any new actions or requests for this year, but I would like to support Councilmember Robinson's two suggestions. One, I think it is very appropriate for the Maryland Municipal League to advocate for those state residents who are not within municipalities and to, to help them to incorporate. And secondly, I, I do like the idea of the reverse tax on energy, and I wonder if that isn't something we could be asking the state for authority from municipalities to levy such a tax.
See, no more hands.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mentioned at the beginning, we've talked about increased revenue sources. Do you want me to draft an LAR again, that's the same thing that we had this past year? Or it's...
And that, and last year, that got turned into, let's have a task force, and the task force got...
Oh, and the task force...
And the task force got turned into seven delegates and seven senators and no municipal or county representation.
And with the primary interest having to do with teachers.
Yeah. So, so that's what can happen to requests.
Well, I don't have to prepare one. I'm sure the topic is still of interest to the MML, and they'll do it, but if you want me to do it, I could. I'll pass.
I'd be, I'd be tempted to say, I don't know. I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether the reaction that we would get would be positive or negative in terms of it coming in again and just everybody kind of groaning about what happened and, oh my God, are we going to go there again?
Right, I understand.
I think weighing the staff time against the potential gain, it's probably not worth it this year.
That's fine. Thank you.
Now, return.